All to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of October the 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. To order and I'd ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Attorney Ziminek?
Here.
Finance Director Parker? I know he's here.
Yes, sir.
Nearby.
All right, would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good mic too. Welcome everyone. We're still doing a hybrid kind of meeting. We have a trustee that's not here that was told to stay home, rest, and he is participating, trustee Barry. At this point, I'll go to open forum. Manager May, do we have any open forum requests?
Nothing online, sir. I don't know about the online.
Is anybody in the audience that wants to address the board for anything that's not on the agenda? Now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close open forum and move on to the exciting thing tonight. We lost a true Westmont individual with James Addington, and it is quite an honor tonight to fill that vacancy with soon-to-be trustee Frank Brady. But Frank, I'll ask Clerk Simmsky to swear you in, so you can come up to the front.
I want to make sure you can understand my request. Please raise your right hand, guarantee after me. I faithfully solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of DuPage County, the Westmont Village Code of Ordinances,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties for the office of village trustee because of my bill.
Now trustee Brady, the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, humbled to take Jim Addington's place. We all know Jim Addington, what he's done for Westmont. So I'm humbled to be selected. I didn't realize it would be too many people here today, so I brought my own cheering crowd, wife and my daughter Denise. Just briefly, what I've done. Thirty-five years in the United States Army, I progressed from lower ranking to a command sergeant major, and I retired as a command sergeant major, 85th Division. And before that, I was an armor brigade sergeant major. I was a commandant of Leadership Academy Drill Sardines out of Fort Knox. So I had some experience in the military. However, I never did this all by myself. I had some great people who gave me guidance and helped me out. They put me in the right direction. So on the civilian side, I started off with a place called Ma Bell, Illinois Bell, and I progressed from installer to repairman and eventually became a repair foreman. And then I worked in large accounts in downtown Chicago, met in many schools and Bell Labs, and I became a field engineer for the same thing I did as a repairman. So in 1984, Uncle Sam turned around and they broke up the Bell system. So I had the opportunity to go with AT&amp;T. I continued to become a field engineer. We handled 19 states from the tip of Canada down to the Gulf Coast and traveled quite a bit for the company. Continued to work on mostly phone systems that were being computerized. And in my part-time job, I became a quality consultant for my group of 79 engineers. It was so interesting that these 79 engineers were all handpicked by different operating companies. They were self-motivated, worked out of storefronts, and I was selected to promote quality. Well, doing that job, it was like telling your grandmother how to make apple pie. These people were great people, and it was an interesting experience. When I finished that, I became the office manager at a call center for the 19 states we call the Great Lakes Region, and eventually broke up the system. And I moved to Westmont, spent 24 years there. I met a lady down the street who had the office of Chamber of Commerce, Nancy Martin, a very elegant lady. And she encouraged me to get involved in committees, and eventually I became a board member. I did my tour as the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I continue to work with the great guy, Larry Fosberg, who's really a benefit to Westmont Chamber. So that's an enough shell. Here I am today. Here to work as a team. I'm a team member. I like working with a team. I mean, gotta cooperate, and I'm here to work. And Jim, I'll keep an eye on him. He'll keep an eye on me.
Again, that's why. Congratulations. You could take your seat, and that's why you were selected. It's because your background and your team approach you. So we think, we all think you're going to fit in extremely well. Thank you.
Welcome, Frank.
I now have to ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call of the new village board.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
And trustee Nero?
Here.
Okay, move on the agenda to reports. Mine is first. Again, I mentioned before the hybrid virtual village meetings. We'll continue to hold this until we can get everybody safely here. Again, we're open to the public. Manager May, is Chief Riley available? Do you know?
Yes, he is.
Because I was going to have an update on the COVID-19 update, if he's available.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, chief.
Good evening, board. We are in DuPage County. It's 18,729 cases. That's up about 180 new cases since yesterday. Over yesterday, we had two new deaths in DuPage County, so we are now at 575 confirmed deaths. We are at 597 confirmed cases in the Westmont ZIP code, which is up three since yesterday. Unfortunately, we are not trending in the right way in Westmont. We have 43 new confirmed cases in the last 14 days, which is a spike from two weeks ago of my last report. This is basically in the age group between 15 and 19 years of age. So again, everyone, we need to continue to social distance, continue to wear our face masks out in public. And one special announcement I'd like to make, Mayor, is we need to, when we are disposing of face masks, we need to put them in the trash. They are not recyclable. We don't just throw them on the streets or on the sidewalks. We need to put them in the trash. Masks, face coverings, et cetera, are not recyclable. So please, let's follow that rule and put them in the trash when we're done using them. That's all I got, Mayor, unless you or the board have any questions for me.
I don't see any. Well, thank you, chief. I forgot to ask trustee Brady, did you want to take pictures before they, with your family?
Sure.
Come on, stand here and we'll take some pictures. So they're here, my soul. If you want to stand. Trustee Brady, I mean Brady, will stand up here so we can get the background. Get the whole board to. Okay, I'll move on. Couple more things under my report. You see in front of me various items, PPE items, that have been donated to us from our sister city, Shinhu and Magistrate Yang. They're generous donations. We have 10 boxes, and they include different types of face coverings and protective gowns. And we'll be passing those along to our senior housing and staff to, and again, it's a donation. They've been extremely generous. And again, I'd like to thank Angela, our ambassador, who has put this together. We will be having a cyber meeting with our sister city next Thursday, the 15th. And that'll be here. They'll be 8:30 in the morning there. We'll be 7:30, 8:00 here. So we'll be meeting to talk to them about their donation and appreciate it. And our Taiwanese friends, I'd like to wish them a happy National Day, Double Ten, which will be October the 10th. We've participated in the past, but this year, due to COVID, they're not having a parade. My last item, again, we talked about trustee Addington, what he meant to this community, what he did for this community. Former mayor, 20-year elected office, Lions Club, basketball. He did everything for this community. So on September 26th, we announce that we'll begin work on a redesign for property adjacent to the train station on West Quincy, and that this area is to be renamed in honor of former mayor and trustee Jim Addington. So additional details will be forthcoming. So it's going to be dedicated to him. And as the plans continue to evolve, we'll share them with the public online. And that's all I have, and I turn to Clerk Simmsky.
Want to remind everybody that the candidate packets are available for pickup from the clerk's office. I can't talk with this. The positions that are up for election in April 2021 are mayor, clerk, three village trustees, and three library trustees. Candidates can go out and obtain petitions for the April election now. They can do it now. Scarecrows are on display in downtown Westmont until November 1st. All are encouraged to vote for your favorite scarecrows online at westmontchamber.com. Also, the dine Westmont raffle is underway, offering two $600 gift card prizes. Tickets are $10 each or three for 25 and are available online at westmontchamber.com through October 20th. And I do want to tell everybody, well, I do have an announcement too about business licenses. The business license renewals have gone out for the new year. We are no longer issuing stickers. Instead, a business can print off the license through the online portal. If there are any issues with renewals, please contact the clerk's office at 630-981-6220. And finally, I just want to report that Rotary did have to do their first raffle. We had to get it done before the Knights wanted to start doing theirs. Unfortunately, we couldn't have anybody there, couldn't serve food, and couldn't do anything. But we held it on September 30th. We had one big winner. And then 10 Constellation $100 prizes went out, and nobody here won anything.
But as soon as I didn't get a call.
Yeah, I was wondering if you lost my number.
I didn't. Marie didn't.
Again, it goes towards a good cause. Rotary puts it right back in our community, just like the Lions Club.
So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
And we're going to go over to trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be December 19th, 4:30, right here in Village Hall. And then a little quick update on our new Public Works building. The project is moving towards completion. A limited attendance ribbon cutting is being scheduled for Tuesday, November 10. So right on schedule, which will also be the village's 99th anniversary and the beginning of the countdown to our 100th anniversary celebration. So expect some more, expect some more news on that to come. And then I have something kind of fun that I saw online a couple days ago, and some of you might have seen it, but I wanted to read it. And forgive me, because my English isn't as good as this was written about 100 years ago. But I'm not sure if anybody knows how we actually got the name Westmont. I didn't know it. I thought it was kind of a neat article. So I'm going to read it, and I'll try to not butcher it too much. But again, the English is a lot different. "No more will the loud voice conductor and break man on the queue call Greg's as the dinky nears that little spot on the map east of the grove. No more unless we slip will we refer to that place by the name we have called it so long. Westmont is the euphemist title by which we will designate our neighboring village in the future. Recently, the McIntosh Company of Chicago subdivision secured title to a great deal of that rolling farmland around Greg's. We mean Westmont. They have cut it into acre lots, more or less, and are now selling it to the Chicago people, many of whom who have that well-known diseased chicken fever." Not sure what that is. "Somehow that name Greg's did not roll easy under their tongues and going to the man who does such things for the CBNQ. They had the name changed in official orders." And here's the good part. "Rumor has it that great things are expected for the new subdivision, that waterworks and everything will be installed. Making the desert blossom to like the rose will be child's play, making a village out of Greg's." So even back then, they were trying to get a new public works facility. I thought that was kind of cool.
So it started a long time ago.
It did, yeah. It's kind of neat. And thanks, I forget the gentleman who posted on Facebook, but there's always good history on there.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
And we'll go to trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an Administration Finance Committee meeting tonight. It was, we talked a lot about the CARES grant from DuPage County. And then the village has already given out grants as well. We've granted over $17,000 to 15 businesses. We've done over $7,000 to six businesses. So we've done a lot of good stuff for around the village. In addition to that, we talked about the late water fees. So some people are not going to be really happy with this, but we've got to come after them and try to recoup some of our money. So that's going to be happening. And then we discussed capital improvements on hold, one of which was the new field manor. There's a public sidewalk that's being under consideration. It's been discussed several months. So that's probably going to be worked on. And then in addition to that, I also have information about the Halloween costume contest and our home decorating contest. Now, I know people in this village do not know about this because I've been talking around, and I've discussed it and sent a lot of people to our website. So please, if you're decorating your home, go to westmonevents.com and learn about our home decorating contest. We'll be sending judges to your house. You can also, we'll also post them online, and everybody will be able to vote for your favorite. And then our costume contest, all of the Westmont Special Events people will be dressed in costume, and we will go to your home and photograph your children for a costume contest, and we'll be handing out goodie bags as well. So everybody with grandchildren, I encourage you to sign them up because I think we need to get this really rolling. It's not a village-wide project. It's a special events contest. So if you haven't already gone to westmonevents.com and signed up for both. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, to go along with that, Halloween on our website has some do's and don'ts about people who want to answer a door, don't want to answer the door. Halloween's not being canceled in Westmont, so it's still going. Just follow our instructions that we put forth online. Trustee Marie Johanna Guzzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be November 5th, 4:30 PM. Everyone is invited to attend. It will be a hybrid meeting again or a combination of. For the police department, the shred event, yay! The police department will host a paper shredding event with Westmont Business DacuSign to benefit Special Olympics Illinois. The shred event is scheduled for October 17th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the police department, 500 North Cass Avenue. Also, the prescription drug takeback is also back. The police department is also hosting the prescription drug takeback on October 24th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 500 North Cass Avenue. Both of those days are Saturdays, so please make it a point to come on out. The fire department, the canceled events. Due to COVID-19, there will not be a Fire Prevention Week open house or a silent parade this year. This week is Fire Safety Week. Safety videos. The fire department has started posting safety videos and tours of apparatus on social media. Please check those out. And the community survey has been launched. The fire department has launched a community survey to gauge feedback from the public regarding their service. We encourage everyone to go to the village website and take the survey. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we'll turn to trustee Barker, who's packed the house tonight with his committee.
Socially distanced the house.
Yeah, they are. They're out in the hallway.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening. The first one, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled for Westmont First on Monday night at 6:00 PM. And a census update. Now, we've broken 75%. We're at 75.1%. And I noticed there was a notation that said the census is ending or ended, but I keep seeing other notes on that that could possibly go on as long as October 31st. It's probably in the courts. It'll be in the courts. So it's ending when they say it's ending. But right now, we're doing better than we ever have with 75.1% participation. So we're looking forward to the end result of all of that and see if there's a benefit to the community. And then I look forward to this night every year. We have the Environmental Improvement Committee here this evening to give you a annual report. And everybody is here. Well, not everybody is here, but Mr. Yader, who is our staff liaison for that, and everybody knows John, is not available. He's out of town tonight. And, you know, so you're going to hear from our committee members. John, I just want to say that John does a phenomenal job for us in keeping that, as the whole committee does. But John really has his heart into this community and into the environment and brings us stuff every day, all day long, from different agencies and everything. So there's a lot to that. But anyway, if the members of the Environmental Improvement Committee can come up, it's their 15, 20 minutes. I said, take as long as you want. We have to be home by 10. But anyway, some of you know they'll introduce themselves that they're all wearing masks, but these are great people, Mayor. I'm very proud of the work they do, and they're going to tell you what we've been up to and where we're going to go, so.
Great.
Glenn, you want to start it off?
Just introduce yourself and then.
Hi, Glenn Gabriel, member of the EIC. And let's see if we can get this to work. Okay. Trustee Barker, do the member, the fellow of the board, do they have copies?
You know what? I can't say that they do.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll just move this along. Get rid of the cover page and see if we can get that to advance. Okay. Get the index, and we'll go with the executive summary. This is a recap of what we did last year. Of course, everything's in the past tense. The format is similar to what you've seen before from us. We threw two activities, key activities, the composting and the holiday lights. We kept four and a half tons of material out of landfills. And even though it's past tense, Krista De Nulles will have more to say about waste re-minimization. We had a number of activities in the village pertaining to tree protection and cleaning up of invasives. We had a fair amount of good engagement with the community on different events, informational and otherwise, supporting things like Westmont First and so on, friends at the library with the really well-done Monarch Festival, the street fair presence and similar. Then we had quite a number of attendances at various professional seminars and meetings. These are organizations that are in our region, and they're focused on things from energy efficiency to climate change. So we've tried to put the village's presence, make us known there. We did not have any resolutions before you or recommendations per se. However, we did work at length on three possibilities, and Soul Smart and Dark Skies, again, Krista will have some other information on that. Then at this point, let me get to the charts. Solid waste is one of the biggest controllable variables we have as residents of the county and of the village. What you see there is what the DuPage County reports on the Cool DuPage site. And down the way, you can see Westmont. These are in alphabetical order, and the recycling rate that shows includes landscape waste. So that chart doesn't give you a good perspective, so I prepared this one. The left-hand side of the ranking shows the same DuPage data, however, in recycling rate declining order. And there you see we come out as about 18th in the continuum of reporting communities. Not every DuPage community is present in this database. For example, Willowbrook, you don't see there. The right-hand side, though, backs out the landscape waste. And this is a traditional practice that the EIC has been doing because, first, the material is prohibited from landfills in the first place, and there's a lot of weather and other non-controllable factors. There we move up a bit to 15th in the overall ranking. And the two observations from that is we underperformed our peer communities of Darien, Claridan Hills, and Downers Grove. That's something we on the committee have thought about a lot and are going to try to do something in the next few years to shift that. I think that's about all I need to say about that lot. Okay, and this is how focusing on just us. The 19 figures coming from Waste Management, our service provider for the curbside and special collections events, versus the prior year, I don't have an ability to point, but you can see that in 2019, we went up on the trash, down on the recycling, and landscape was up a lot again, although that's a discounted factor. If we look at the bottom there, the trash and recycling only, it looks like we're fairly flat at up only 0.6%. However, I ask that you hold that thought for the next array. And there, that looks at 18 and 19 in a little different order. I'm not able to point, but there on that trash versus plus recycling on a year-to-year basis, if we looked at trash alone, it's 65% of the total. If we look at recycling, that residents recover and divert, then that's about 74%. But that's up 2.1% to prior year. Looking at recycling. Looking at recycling the same way, there's that 3.4% decline. So that 0.6% net gross change is kind of illusory, it's more instructed to look at that mix. So we're going the wrong way. This is looking at, we have three full years of data, and you can see here from this moving average, the expected seasonality, holidays and so on with trash disposal, more parties, there are things being thrown out. The recycling, the middle graph is fairly flat, and the bottom one, landscape expecting in spring and so on, there's a spike and so forth. But leveling things out brings us to this chart, and there you can see clearly, over the last three years, despite Village population staying fairly stable, and conditions in the economy and so on, not too dissimilar, the trash keeps going up, and recycling, although it's flattening out a little, it's still on a downtrend. So these are things that we would like to try to shift a little bit, in terms of our focus of offering the community alternatives and other options. And let's see. We did have, in 19 planned events, and Krista will talk about the curbside composting, we had also planned a special drop-off event for this year, and that was preempted by the restrictions from the infectious plague. So, any questions in our overall performance, or what we've been doing?
No, if it was just this year, I would say that people weren't eating out as much, and doing home cooking, so I can see some of the recycling dropping, but not over a period of three years.
Exactly, and this, of course, is 19, this is up to December, so this is before the stay-at-home restrictions and all. It'll be interesting to see, on that respect, Mayor, how the numbers look in, you know, as they roll up through 2020.
Glenn?
Yes?
Do you have any plans to educate the public to increase their recycling and decrease the garbage?
We would like to do more on the way of publicity, and some of our public events, like the street fairs and so on, were preempted. The pumpkin-smashing event, where we could have had provided handouts and so on, some educational materials, we weren't able to do. If the conditions continue as you are, we might have to do those online. But we found in the past that direct engagement with the residents works best.
Have you put anything in any of the student backpacks, virtual backpacks?
I don't believe we have this year.
No, we haven't, but obviously, that's something we could do, especially in accordance with the library, we work with the school, and put things in their backpacks all the time, we have it virtually for the school, so that's something that I can bring to the marketing team at the library, too, because we like to also pull them into this, and see what we can get over to them.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, at that, this was a lot of material, I kind of flew through it, but in general, though, if the board has any special tasks, action areas, or initiatives that you would like us to pursue in calendar year 2020, as it remains, and then going into '21, please refer those to trustee Barker, so that we can take those under advisement and action. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll jump into another speaker here, but you can see the level of analyzing that they do here.
Great data, yeah. I can't wait to see, you'd have to think recycling's got to be up this year, I mean, with everybody at home and things getting shipped, and everything gets everything delivered now, a lot more cardboard, and I know my recycling bin's open, it's filled before that, you know, probably halfway through the first week, and then you got another week and a half to figure out what you do, but...
Yeah, no, like Glenn said, it'll be really interesting to see the next year, what the numbers look like, and if we can try to figure out some key points in time, and maybe, you know, even piggyback on some of those things, that maybe if we do see some better numbers this next year, doing a campaign targeted exactly that way, of, look, we did it in 2020, we did a little bit better, let's concentrate on what we're seeing, or even the opposite, if it does look worse, we can use that information and kind of see where is the best bang for our buck in getting people to recycle and understand how to do things. So I think that's something that as a group, we can talk through, and figure out where are those areas we can talk to people, and how do we get that one-on-one communication with residents, in a time that we don't get to have face-to-face, but I think we have found plenty of other ways to reach out to the community, so we can figure that out, too. And if you don't know me, I'm Brittany Smith, I'm also an EIC member, but I'm the Assistant Director of the Library also, so I was just going to talk about a few of the programs that we did in combination with the library. So every year, we work with the library to do programs to educate the community on various environmental subjects. So in 2019, in April, we did two, we typically do a couple around Earth Day to really kind of pull into that, there's also the seedling giveaway that typically John does, and they do the pickup at the library. So we did a habitat makeover, so adding wildlife value to your landscaping, and also composting, building your garden from the ground up. We see a lot of great success when we do gardening-type programs at the library, because a lot of people are very interested in getting to do it themselves, and finding new ways to do it. I think this spring coming up will be an interesting opportunity, we saw during the pandemic that a lot of people turned to gardening when they were at home, and things like that, because they wanted some things to do outside. So I know we will start talking in the next few months about maybe some of the virtual programs we can do to get people back in their gardens this spring, and kind of keep on that trend. We also, the EIC was a partner with the library in their summer learning program, so in 2019, the theme was the incredible earth. So they were a partner throughout the entire program, since we were promoting environmental topics, and just being, you know, socially conscious when it comes to the earth. And lastly, we had our first-ever Monarch Festival at the library in 2019, the EIC was a great partner in that, it was a great success. We did it virtually this year, so we were still able to keep it going, but we're hoping maybe next year, we'll be able to bring it back at the park, we had a great time. So those are the programs that we did in 2019, like I said, we're going to take all the information we get from you guys tonight, and the information that we have, and see what we can do for 2021 virtually, to bring some more awareness to these topics to the community.
Well, thank you. And the library has been very involved in this community in all aspects, we really appreciate them getting involved in the community, and it's a great program offering, it's tremendous, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hello, I'm Krista Stenulis, also an EIC member, and one of the initiatives Bruce had asked us to talk about tonight is light pollution, it's something that we talk about quite a bit in the EIC, and something we wanted to kind of give you an overview of. I don't know if I can pass these around, or with the best way if I set them?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Excuse me just a second while I get set up. I don't know if there's a password on the computer.
Not that clever, it's right there on the sticker.
Oh, perfect, sorry. All right. Can everyone hear me all right? So lighting technology has advanced a great deal over the past 100 years, and most of these have been very good advancements, and very good for just humankind, but also very good for the environment. Some of the advancements, although how swiftly they've developed, have caused some problems that have been kind of overlooked, and I think snowballed over time, so I wanted to talk about some of those issues that we're seeing, and kind of wanted to bring to everyone's So lighting styles that were popular in metropolitan areas in the early 20th century are still very prized as formal landscape elements today, and things that we see very often. This, of course, is, everyone refers to as the acorn light fixture, and we see it throughout a lot of municipalities, a lot of suburbs, including Westmont. And I don't want to pick on the acorn light, but it is a good example of some of the issues related to light pollution, so I'm going to kind of use that as an example today. So when the acorn light was designed, there wasn't a whole lot of thought given to the fact that much of the light is actually not reaching the target, which is down on the ground, it's kind of cast in every direction, so they call it omnidirectional, and half of the light is actually directed either horizontally outward or upward. As population grew over the last 100 years, I think we're at 300% of what we were about 100 years ago, a lot more light fixtures were installed, and they came up with this phenomenon that they call sky glow, which is the effect that this has produced over time. So here, you can kind of see the Chicago metropolitan area, these are images that NASA has on their website to kind of show this issue. And you can see from space how much you can actually see together the effect that all of those fixtures have caused. This is the earth composite that's been put together by NASA also, and the United States, you can clearly see like the metropolitan areas, and how those have a considerable impact on the amount of light being cast out into space. So what is the effect of this? Basically, sky glow, in addition to just being able to see it from space, it creates a higher ambient light level as we're looking at the sky, so you can see, in this graphic here, a dark sky site where you can see all of the stars is very different than a rural sky, or a suburban sky, or an urban, or inner-city sky. So the more light fixtures you have that are casting the light out, the more difficult it is to see the stars. So as lighting technology, or LED technology took hold, basically over the last 20 years, more light output was possible with less energy consumption, which is a great thing for reducing energy consumption and a huge cost savings overall. But there are still some negatives associated with that. So one of the negatives you can see, in terms of holding on to some of the traditional looks of these fixtures, these fixtures that are omnidirectional, is that although we have saved a lot of energy, we're still, in the case of these fixtures, sending half of that illumination out into the sky. So basically, that's wasted money in addition to wasted energy kind of going out into the sky. If that, if those fixtures had reflectors on them, that light would be bounced down to the direction that we want the light to be seen, to light the ground, and overall, less energy would be needed, because more of that illumination would be hitting the surface that it's intended to hit. So this kind of race to claim these cost savings, and these energy savings by businesses, homeowners, and municipalities, led to people, you know, hurrying to install LEDs inside and outside, while the technology was still advancing. So one of the issues, aside from the cost savings, or the loss of, you're not, I guess not fully realizing all the cost savings, because we still have a lot of these fixtures, and it's not just the acorn fixtures, but many fixtures, there's uplighting on different buildings, or on monuments, or things like that also, that we need to take into consideration. But one of the other issues with this type of lighting, and with the advancement to LED, is the temperature of the lighting. So the different technology initially was only available in what's called a cool white, a lot of times it was advertised as being closer to daylight, so being more, you know, friendly, because it looks just like daylight, but we really don't want to recreate daylight in the middle of the night, that's not really the goal. So the cool white light is actually, what we see as the white light, is actually formed by blue wavelengths within the light, but when it gets to our eyes, we read it more as a white. Some of the LEDs, it's a really high Kelvin temperature, it reads a little bit blue, but when you talk about LEDs, if you've ever purchased them in the store, you'll see that it has a number with a K behind it, and that's the Kelvin temperature. So it's available in a range of Kelvin temperatures, and that kind of denotes what different colors of wavelength of light. So the higher the Kelvin temperature, like the 5000s are more the blue lights, whereas the ones that are more, look more like a traditional incandescent, are like the 2700, 3000 K. So that's another issue, is that blue light, and I'll explain a little bit about that in a minute here. So another issue, I guess, with the lower wattages needed for more light output, was that a lot of these fixtures were retrofitted, so your different light fixtures are rated for a certain wattage. But now, with the introduction of LEDs, you could plug an LED that was still a lower wattage, but with a much higher light output in, so we have a lot more glare issues that have developed with the introduction of LED lights also. So one of the concerns of glare is safety. Everyone is under the impression that the more light you have, the safer things are, whereas that's been proven to not necessarily be true. I think the way that we need to approach it is to light smarter, and not light more. So you can see in these images here, in the lower left, there's a light fixture on the left, which shows an unshielded fixture, which is omnidirectional, and it's not necessarily, all of the light's not necessarily getting down to where you need it to go, it's kind of going up to the roof line, but once it's shielded, and that light is reflected down, you can see the steps and everything at night. The same thing with just security around buildings or homes, the upper picture, on the upper right, shows what it would look like looking at somebody beyond an omnidirectional light, and you can't really see the person that well, but once you shield that light, you can see them a lot better. So the idea being that if we light smarter, and think about how that light is being reflected onto what's needed, you eliminate a lot of those glare issues also. So light pollution does not only affect astronomers. When I spoke about the blue light earlier, the blue light and the amount of light, I'm sure you've heard people say, "Don't look at your iPad or your iPhone right before bed, it affects your sleep," and it actually does. So the blue wavelengths, and the amount of light that we're getting at night, they've done studies that show that it throws off people's sleep patterns. So your circadian rhythm, which was developed by kind of the natural daylight and nighttime, allows your body to have a rest period, and it produces melatonin, a hormone that's important for sleep-wake cycle, metabolism, and immune system. So they're finding that reduced levels of melatonin are being produced in people because they're being exposed to blue light, and more light in the evening and at nighttime. They've also done a lot of studies that show that wildlife has had a big effect from the amount of light that's now being shone at night, and the blue wavelengths also. So everything from the coral reefs, to sea turtle migrations, and monarch butterflies, fireflies, all kinds of pollinators have been studied, and they're finding more and more that all of these, all of this excess lighting is throwing off their ability to navigate at night. Like songbirds, for instance, a lot of times, songbirds will migrate at night, and they're drawn, instead of their migration path, they're drawn to big cities. So there are a lot of different things to think about, and a lot of things that we could, I think, do, in essence, it's kind of the easiest pollution to take care of, right? Because all you do to get rid of it is turn off lights, in essence, but... So this is something we've been talking about quite a bit for some time at the EIC, but something that, and we've also, last year in 2019, we did a review of Westmont's ordinances in comparison to the International Dark Sky Association, who did a model ordinance to control light pollution. They did a model ordinance in conjunction with the Illuminating Engineers Society, and we kind of did a comparison to see like where Westmont stands with restrictions on outdoor lighting. And there really currently aren't too many restrictions within the Westmont ordinances for this. So kind of backtracking a bit, a few things to note is that in the Illinois General Assembly in 2010, there was a resolution adopted encouraging municipalities to research and adopt lighting practices that encourage improved night preservation. The IDA, which I mentioned, in conjunction with IESNA, Illuminating Engineers Society, has come up with a model ordinance in 2011. And in 2016, the American Medical Association also came out with guidelines to encourage people... to encourage people to pay attention to how they're lighting. And those included a lot of the same things that I've just kind of gone over. So, so I guess what we would recommend is that Westmont take a look at its ordinances pertaining to light pollution and trespass with the following concerns in mind. I'm sorry, one, one thing Trustee Barker had also mentioned is I think that some residents had brought some issues up because the Westmont is, does have a lot of developments kind of on the books or developers that are coming in to kind of take a look at different properties in Westmont and what they can do with them. And the thing is, if we don't have the ordinances in place, a lot of this is going to be driven by what they choose to do. So there won't be necessarily consistency through town, and it won't necessarily be what we might like to see. So that's kind of why we're talking about it today. But, so, things to consider in going through ordinances, kind of reviewing what I talked about. The direction of the light is one important factor. So just controlling trespass, basically making sure that lighting on residential or commercial or village properties stops at the edge of the property line, that you're not throwing light beyond your property line. So basically, all outdoor lights would be full cutoff. And if you see the diagram down on the lower left, the best practice would be that the light shines down at an angle. So you don't have any light that's going horizontal or above. The other thing is the color. So down here you can see the Kelvin temperatures. It shows from about 1,000 to 10,000, what the different color spectrum looks like. So just providing advice to residents and businesses that what we're aiming for is around 3,000 Kelvin. That's the best for what we found for humans and primates, what they've, and all the scientific studies to show that that has the least harmful effect on melatonin production and sleep cycle, but also for other animals and pollinators and things like that. So that would be the color temperature guideline. And then also the intensity of lighting. So the idea being used, using the least illumination for the task at hand to be effective. So the Illuminating Engineers Society actually has recommendations for what different light levels would be for different tasks. So trying to not exceed what those guidelines are would be helpful. And then also wherever possible, putting time controls or occupancy sensors or motion sensors on light. So you're only turning the light on when you need it. Like, we don't all need to have our porch light on all night. We need it when we're coming and going, things like that. So... Any questions from anyone?
Very, very enlightening. This board has, I didn't mean it as a joke, but some people in the audience thought it was. But this board's been real sensitive to the environment, and we passed the Heritage Tree Ordinance, preserving our heritage trees. And I see this board looking to Trustee Barker's committee to make some recommendations, which we can include in our ordinances. You've done a tremendous job. This committee is, I know, Trustee Barry, when he first became a trustee, his father started this years ago. And he brought the Environmental Commission back. And I'm thankful he did, because today under, with Trustee Barker and leading away, you've got tremendous volunteers, tremendous information that we can use. So thank you.
Thank you. And we're happy to help with anything that's needed. So... One other thing I said I would talk about, I just wanted to give an update from 2019 also, in terms of reducing the negative waste stream direction. One thing that we brought to the board last year, at the end of last year, was curbside composting. And that was approved by the board, and we were going through the process, I think, of putting that contract in place and getting together the advertising materials. And then COVID hit, and everything was kind of put on hold. Waste Management had asked us to kind of put it on the back burner for now, just in terms of they weren't sure what staffing, things were coming down the line. So we just wanted to touch base and see what the status is of that, and if that's something that we might be able to implement for March of next year.
Okay. Manager May?
Yeah, just that, recognizing all the reasons that it was put on hold, but the, we're, we're not in any reach, you know, we haven't put it on hold. So as soon as Waste Management is, you know, available to do that, actually, you know, in fact, we were relying on you to keep in contact with them. So as soon as they're ready to promote it. It is tied to the landscape waste season, so it would probably be a springtime, you know, implementation, if I had to guess.
Good.
Yeah, ideally, in order to be able to promote the program, it would be great if, if there's anything we can do to get it in, in place, the contract in place, and at least know the parameters of the contract by the beginning of the year. That would be fantastic. But I can, I'd be happy to reach out to Waste Management. Okay, sounds good.
To Trustee Little's earlier point, one of the key things about this waste...
Glenn, you gotta come all the way up to the microphone.
One of the key things about this waste stream minimization impact of this is that some 30 to 40% of the trash tonnage is actually food scraps and some yard mix in it, but most of it's lettuce leaves and so on. So this offers us, I think, the biggest near-term opportunity to change the trends that, on some of those charts we saw over the last three years.
So we realize that all of this is, you know, based on education and getting the community to embrace the information and participate, because it is, you know, it makes it a little bit harder to throw things out when you have to think about it and you have to take care of it and sort it correctly and all of that. So education, education. And that's where we're, you know, Krista brought it up, that we, if we can identify this by January, then we can get the Communications Department engaged and get it out to the residents, so it becomes success, more successful quickly, you know, is, is always the goal on all of these things. And they've done, you know, great work. And that's what it is, is a reduction in the waste stream, because we are trending the wrong way. And, you know, they even looked at, when I first came on there, they were looking at, you know, was it the factor that the, the waste, recycling waste container was bigger? So it's bigger and you could put more things in it. But then the toter for garbage got big too. And, you know, it, it just, is that the factor? Is it just people not participating? So education is the key to all of it, really. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have other committee members here?
Oh, yeah, if everyone else would like to introduce them.
They wanna...
No, Carol, Carol, are you gonna talk a little bit about the, the hard work you've been doing? Yeah, please. This is, she's on our committee and she, she's partnering with us in an effort that she has through one of her organizations.
Where'd you get all these great volunteers?
I went, they said, "Where are all the smart people?" They said, "At the library."
Hi, my name is Carol Johnson. I'm relatively new to the Environmental Improvement Committee. I just moved to Westmont about two years ago. And I'm also a member of a group in Western Springs, the Green Team at the First Congregational Church of Western Springs. They are the ones who started out styrofoam recycling in the area. And Saturday, we had an unbelievable day. I've been asked to share this with you because I know a lot of people from Westmont actually have been bringing their styrofoam over to Western Springs as well. Can you hear me? Okay, I don't know these things.
If you want to take it off, that's fine to talk. It's easier to talk.
Didn't even see my face.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, the results are in from what happened on Saturday. We had been doing it on the first Saturday of each month until March, which was our last one. And then, of course, hadn't been doing it ever since then. And we tried to do it with safe distancing and everything else this past Saturday. And the numbers are in. Like I said, there were 417 cars...
Wow.
From over 27 different towns. 95% of the people who came through, we had, one of the members actually kind of greeted people and gave them some other information and so forth for the pumpkin toss coming up. And she said 95% of the people were very grateful. Some people, their cars were like loaded down with so much styrofoam, you can't imagine. We put it in bags, big plastic bags that are about this big around and about this high when they're filled up. There were 113 bags. 87 of those were the block styrofoam, the kind where the TVs and, you know, the electronic things come in. We don't collect packing peanuts, so it's none of that. And then the other category is food type things, the clamshell type things. Okay. There were actually 26 bags of just the food type of styrofoam. And then there was the eight cartons. We keep those separate. And they filled up one back end of one SUV, taken to a farmer who uses them, again. And there was also the big coolers that maybe pharmacists get things in, or maybe people get food from Omaha Steaks or whatever. So there were separately, we kept out 23 coolers, because there is somebody who uses them in another way too. So Trustee Barker asked if I would report about this, you know, what's going on. The styrofoam is picked up then by DART, which is a company that's out in Aurora. They do recycle it, at least that's our understanding. And things that are made from it are things like rulers and the roll that they use to put the cash register receipts on, you know, receipt you get from Jewel or whatever. Those rolls can be made from it, picture frames. So there's a number of different things that can be made from this styrofoam. There's debate about it. You know, obviously Springfield is talking about banning styrofoam. I don't know the details on that yet. But as far as food packing type styrofoam, I, I can see that. We can use other things other than styrofoam. But when it comes to the packing styrofoam that we have for our electronics and whatever people are buying that comes in a box and it's got to be protected, I don't know what's going to happen there. But it takes up so much space in the landfill. It's 95% air. Our recycling companies otherwise won't pick it up for obvious reasons. It breaks up, it's messy, it flies around, whatever. And it messes up their whole process of recycling at the facilities. So it, it's an issue because it does take up so much of the space in the landfills and everything else, and it doesn't biodegrade by any means. And this is an effort that's being made, like I said, to, to try to do that. And I was asked to tell you about it. Any questions?
I'd just like to add, you know, it's a great effort that they were making there. And the committee didn't try to start one here. We just decided that we would partner with them and promote through our, our website their great success and drive, you know, Trustee Little is, she runs a trip over there every now and then for folks. And that's the, you know, the whole thing, something going very well. And we're just happy that we could promote it and direct people to that to do the right thing when it comes to the styrofoam.
Will you be doing another one next, on November the 7th?
We are planning to, yes. And actually, we're gonna have our pumpkin toss at the same time.
My garage is getting full.
Oh, you would, you, you just would not believe. I know some people came and left because the traffic was backed up blocks. People were waiting because, and some of them, their vehicles were just truly loaded down, almost filled up one of those bags by themselves. Just tremendous.
Oh, yeah. I've, no, I've got at least two of them in my garage.
Great. There is a report that was done in the doings, apparently. So I was going to try to show that to you a little bit because it does have some pictures. It gives you a real idea of the volume of it. It's a huge success. There's, I mean, I can't recall the exact title of it, but anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if we have anything more, but Jerry is here in the back, and she's a great volunteer. She participates in all our events and helps out. And we're grateful for all her service to the community. And then lastly, we do have a couple of things. Of course, we have the pumpkin composting coming up, and we're promoting that right now. And then this thing that we're gonna bring back at some point, and this is something that John Yater had brought to us. Appleton, Wisconsin did a program called No Mow. And they did a month where they didn't mow their front yards so that it would be helpful to the pollinators. And we have talked a little bit in, during, with staff to see how code enforcement would handle that and how we would promote it. So it doesn't become a thing where everybody can just ignore the ordinances. But we could have, as people sign up for this no-mow thing. And it's, it's good for the pollinators and it's good for the, the environment. And we're gonna, you know, flush that out and bring you some more information on that. And hopefully that is something that we can also take pride in here. That'll be sometime in the spring. But you'll probably hear directly from Mr. Yater on that. So I want to thank them and Mayor, I just want to say we got great people.
Come out here and take a picture with them, please. Join them out front here.
And then November, I believe we still have that unlimited leaf pickup at your homes?
Yes.
We implemented that last year. So many bags you have, they, they'll collect them for you?
You want to join the mayor for the...
Me too.
While they're coming up, I, you know, not to slow that down, but the, you know, I did want to say some of this is, particularly the dark skies part, is somewhat timely because as we pointed out at a committee meeting, we had one project where it actually went through a planning and zoning review, and the encouragement was more light. And, you know, and then we get to the village board and the encouragement's less light.
Trustee Barker, I almost, I almost asked, "How much weight does..." and then I didn't. Usually we judge things by pounds, but not styrofoam.
Right.
All right, is that it, Trustee Barker?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that. And thank you to the committee.
Oh, great volunteers. And now we have one more trustee, and I mentioned him before, where his father started the environmental, and Harold brought it back when he first became trustee. So I'm gonna turn to trustee Harold Barry to talk about economic development and his double duty Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, what a great group of volunteers we have here. And Bruce, what a, what a great job you've done with, you know, leading that committee. It's, it's amazing what they're doing. So, very impressive. And Frank, I apologize that I couldn't be there this evening, but please welcome aboard, and, and we're really looking forward to, to working with you. We had a Economic Development Committee is not meeting currently, but we are meeting as a staff. The mayor, myself, Manager May, Larry Forsberg, and several staff members are meeting weekly to monitor economic development and also potential projects coming in. So currently, Windy City Cannabis has pulled their permits and they're moving along. The village is helping them with some of their fence issues. And we look for them to be coming forward very soon. 63rd Street, we just see all of that economic development going on out there. Starbucks is now open. I believe they opened the Friday after our last board meeting. And the mystery grocery store is dangerously closed. Mariano's gas station is open. And we still are getting inquiries all up and down Cass and 63rd. We also are seeing our medical facility on Ogden is moving along. And our office complex on Pasquenelli is nearing completion also. As far as in the planning and zoning, we have Nature's Best still working on their fence, I'm sorry, their parking lot issues. And I think that's all I have on the P&amp;Z. They have, that meeting was canceled also. But we will, I'm sorry, the P&amp;Z will, will be, I believe will be in October at our next board meeting. So, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm going back and forth. But I believe that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing. The ribbon cutting at Napleton is, is going to be, I'm sorry, not Napleton, at the Lexus. And if Larry Forsberg, I don't know if you want to add anything, I don't think we're gonna, I'll have any people there because I think they're about full attendance. I don't think we're going to have any people there, because I think they're about full attendance.
Yeah, he's, and I mentioned before, trustee Berry, that we'll have an opportunity prior to that open house to go there and get an explanation of what they've done, what they're going to do prior to the public being open, to the public.
And I apologize here, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, I'm having trouble with my vision, that's why I'm not at the meeting. I just had some eye surgery, so I'm kind of bouncing back and forth here. So I apologize, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I appreciate you staying involved and participating. We'll move on to, does anybody have any item they'd like removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I ask manager May to please read.
In the consent agenda this evening, our village board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held September 24th, 2020. That's followed by finance ordinance number 11, the aggregate amount of $2,147,546.44. There is one purchase order to Compass Minerals America, that's, it's for $51,923.20, and that represents our low bidder for the annual road salt purchase through DuPage County. Going purchasing. There was only that one purchase order, so the total of purchase orders with finance ordinance number 11 is $2,199,469.64. And that's the entire consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. Any questions? Comments, none? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. And trustee Brady, your first motion you voted on, you just spent $2 million. You'll remember that.
Yeah.
We'll move on to unfinished business. We have one item, and it's increase available Class 23 liquor license for Absolutely Delicious. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Absolutely Delicious. And that's 18 North Cass Avenue. And I know six months ago he was here, and we told him to come back in six months. And I've got deputy liquor commissioner Mulhern to give us more information.
Good evening, mayor. Absolutely Delicious submitted an application for a Class 23 liquor license, which allows them to apply for a video gaming license with the Illinois Gaming Board. The board requested a six-month waiting period to review his application. Absolutely Delicious wishes to provide video gaming as an amenity to customers. Their main business will continue to be that of a restaurant. Class 23 license is needed before business to install video gaming terminals in the village. And mayor, as you indicated, John Fleming, who's here in the audience and can answer any questions any board members may have, and it's mom Beth Mooney, the owner of Absolutely Delicious, applied for a video gaming license. There were some concerns by the board that they wish to have addressed. I am pleased to report, all the issues have been resolved and I've been taken care of. A survey was done by myself with all village department heads to see if anyone has any outstanding conditions or anything. And all advised me that Absolutely Delicious is currently compliant with all village codes and ordinances and is in good standing. So it's now up for the board to decide as to whether to move forward with the Class 23 application. But I can't say that everything was done in a timely manner and is been taken care of, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Second, Berry.
Two seconds. Motion made in second, on the question.
Just a comment, mayor, I was glad to read that memo, and I appreciate the business and business owner taking it very serious and cleaning everything up and committed to doing a good job here in town. So it's exactly why we do what we did, so I appreciate that.
We do it to help the business, so hopefully this will. Any other comments?
Mayor, I should make a comment, and I certainly, my vote has nothing to do with not wanting to help them, so.
Yeah, and I think we've, you've made it clear.
Yeah, I haven't voted for one of these in a long time.
Yes, you're right. And we also make anybody who applies aware of that too, that, your feelings. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, trustee Berry.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank John and his mom. Again, you know, I heard from Tom and trustee Nero read me the memo, so I thank him for reading that for me. And again, we value John, you know, he's got some of the best food in town, and we really look forward to him having success. And I think that this was very fair from the board to do this, and so I'm glad it worked out. Now, I'd also be curious to hear from John on what his winter plans are, because we've talked a lot about this at economic development, of what are the restaurants going to do as the weather turns. And of course, we want to see what we can do from the village to help these restaurants. So I'd be curious, as long as John's there, to see what his plans are moving forward. But again, overall, a thank you to him for complying.
Yeah, winter plans, I'm going to hang in there and hope that this thing changes a little bit. We're going to push for our family packs and push on the pickup and carryout stuff. And then I hope to work with the other restaurants as we did before, and doing a group family pack. Hopefully, we'll come together on that again and try and push that and, you know, just work together.
We're behind you.
Do what we got to do.
Yep, yep. I know Larry Forsberg's been real active in trying to help promote and get people to use all the restaurants in town.
Keep praying.
Any questions? Then I'll ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
No.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Brady. Trustee. Motion passes. The only thing, a comment, is that like any other of our licenses, when it involves alcohol, we tell all the businesses that they have to stay in compliance with the village. And anytime there's a violation or there's a possibility of a hearing, so just want to make that clear. Everyone who has alcohol has to not only abide by the alcohol rules and regulations, but also the village.
And to respond, let's, mayor, is, as you said, all liquor licenses, as a code, you have to remain in compliance with all village licenses, codes, and requirements. The one thing would be is if, you know, this business or any other business starts to fall behind in payments again, or fall behind in any requirements that code enforcement or anybody may require, those could go to the village, those could go to the liquor commissioner for a hearing and a review. Then again, that's not just you, John, that is with any business if we get reports that they're falling behind.
And it's not a month, it's usually three months before we.
We spoke about that, I mean, because some places can fall behind one or two months, and especially in this COVID time, you know, the finance department does give special, you know, dispensation, I guess you could say, or something, you know, gives them a little bit more leeway. And talking to the mayor, I recommended three months. And if a business falls three months or more behind in any issue that's required by the village, that hearing would be held and action would be taken.
Thank you. Then.
If anybody's got any ideas on how restaurants can extend their seating or whatnot, I'm looking for ideas to be able to keep people outside. And, you know, I don't, I've started a conversation with the village and the fire department about heating and doing a tent and whatnot. But if anybody's got any ideas or they've seen anything that might be able to help all of us out that way, that would be appreciated.
It's a tough item with the safety, fire safety with a tent, with heating. That's the, and if you spend the money, are you even going to recoup it? So that's a tough decision.
Yeah, no, it is.
Yeah, well, thank you, and good luck with the gaming. All right, we'll move on to new business. A, reappointment to the board of fire and police commissioners. Board to consider motion to accept the mayor's reappointment of Stella Qualiza, I said that right, to a second term to the board of fire and police commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve, on the question. I do have to say she's doing a tremendous job, along with the other two. They are very busy right now, filling a lot of vacancies at the police department, so. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, new business B, modification of Class A Class 24 liquor license. Board to consider ordinance amending the Class 24 liquor license classification to allow onsite testing of wine and hard ciders. I'd ask deputy liquor commissioner Mulhern for more information.
Mayor, before I read the description, if I could say, a Class 24 license covers basically liquor stores in Westmont that do have a in-room tasting room for specialty aircraft brews only at this time. And Prestige is the only liquor store that we have in town, not including Jewel, but they're the only one, or Mariano's. But they opened this about a year ago and it's been very, so I just want to explain what the Class 24 license was. Prestige Liquors requests permission to open, to allow wine and hard ciders in their tasting room, which is covered by the Class 24 liquor license. Sample sizes will be limited and only for onsite consumption only. To allow the Class 24, the description of the Class 24 license needs to be amended. Due to the popularity request for wine and hard ciders, Prestige Liquors would like to add these items to their menu along with their specialty craft brews. Management from Prestige Liquors is requesting this, and again, they're the only business in town that has this Class 24 license. This change is not made specifically for them, but it will affect them. They have seen a popularity in this tasting room. We've had inquiries from other villages, inquiring as to, you know, how we did this, so it's taking flight. They would, however, a lot of male customers bring females with them, either wife or girlfriends, and they may not drink the beers. And so they've requested ciders or wine, and why can't they taste some of that? So that spawned the request. We've, staff has worked with the mayor and the village attorney in setting limits, ciders, since the alcohol content is close to that of specialty beer, regular beer. The serving sizes will be the same as currently in place for craft beers. And we used to have a wine boutique in town, and in that time, we had specific tasting sizes for that. So we used that description and incorporated into this license. So that's the foundation for the sizes itself. We taught Prestige Liquors before and in the past, and they are very supportive and thanked the village for their, this license, and they will follow any regulation that the board gives.
Again, it's a good example of something we could do to help that business, just like we did with the gaming. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve, on the question.
Let me ask, the deputy commissioner, you know, just curiosity, part of our education is, so they have a liquor store and they have insurance. Because they have a tasting component there, does their liability insurance change?
Ooh, that's a good question.
I'm yielding to the village attorney.
Yeah, well, they'd have to have dramp shop insurance to cover potentially over-serving someone. And, you know, they'd have to have some levels of insurance anyhow. But presumably, they're going to have dramp shop insurance. And the good thing about this is.
Does typical liquor store have that, or just serving?
No, because they're a package for carryout only. So they're serving, they certainly should have dramp shop insurance. And by limiting the, not only the quantity sizes that are served, but the amount that can be served to any one person, so no more than 24 ounces of beer per day for a customer who's sitting there, hopefully, they're avoiding over-serving.
And we check all that.
I will confirm with that. I know they, I would assume they have some type of liquor liability insurance for their package sales, which is different than the consumption. I will check with them to make sure that they have it.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would just, just hope that we, you know, I love Prestige, I think they're a great business, and I'm glad that we can help them out. But I just get concerned, you know, much like our, we've done with other special liquor licenses. So let's take the brewery, for example, where it keeps progressing more than the license allows, you know, so I just want to make sure that we don't all of a sudden allow a food truck here on Fridays and, you know, extend that to maybe, you know, more tasting or more than that 24 ounces. So it's just one of those things, I'm for it, but it's also a slippery slope, because as we just talked today at EDC, it's, we need to have it a level playing field for the people that are buying our full liquor license. So that would be my only thing to the, you know, to the commissioner and so forth, is that we just make sure that we don't all of a sudden create a bar restaurant that's supposed to be just a tasting room.
And there's, the answer, trustee Berry, is concerning question, their size is limited. We've granted, I think they have 12 chairs or eight chairs or so. Their size is limited, and where the tasting area is, and so is a very small room. They've expressed the impression that this is very successful, and I agree with trustee Berry. It could get larger. Will they come back and ask for a request for more, or more serving sizes? It's a possibility, because the specialty brew area is becoming very, very popular in Illinois. Then again, too, they're also trying to stay comparative with, or competitive with, like Benny's and other liquor stores. So I agree with his concern, and I can actually see it coming in the future. And that's something I guess we'll have to address, but keep it in mind, we don't want to turn it into a bar, that's correct.
And we already had addressed that concern with prior business, so it's a good point, trustee Berry. Any other comments?
I think it's just a matter of the fact that it's the sign of the times. I think you need to be progressive enough to understand the needs of the businesses and to meet those needs. So whereas I understand what Harold's saying, I also feel that as a board, we need to make sure that we're helping and not hindering our businesses. And I don't want to see a food truck come in selling, you know, beers, but certainly to help out a longstanding business in this regard, I think it's just and fair, and we've already had other villagers looking to us to talk about our ordinances, so I think it's, I think it's timely.
Good. Seeing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes, and I think they're all good points. We don't want a business to start becoming more of a bar, and a tasting room, and a liquor store. So thank you. Miscellaneous, I think manager May, anybody got any miscellaneous items? Manager May's walking to the podium.
Yeah, I did want to, not to interrupt, reports in the, earlier in the meeting, however many hours ago that was, I don't remember what it was. But the, this is the longest short agenda meeting we've had, so I'm, you know, I'm rambling. I should just get to the point. I wanted to follow up on a comment on one of trustee Nero's reports about the history of Village Westmont. And two points I wanted to, you know, add. One is the, proudly, the water utility is older than the community, and it was first in operation in 1909, so we've already had the 100th anniversary for the utility, which was referenced in the article. And also, it spoke to when and why it was renamed, but not what Westmont meant, and why the word, why the name Westmont, and just pointing out that it is the, due to the fact that the Westmont Cass Avenue, this Craig's Station, or Milk Stop, whatever was used, is the high point on the, you know, the Burlington Northern, or then Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad. It is the highest point on the railroad from the city of Chicago all the way to the Mississippi River. So it's the westernmost mound or mount, if you will, so that's.
Well, thank you.
A little bit of additional.
Yeah, too.
Anything on chicken fever?
It was in the water.
We typically have a bee in chicken ordinance, so it was something that is permitted in the suburbs where it was not allowed in the city.
Seeing nothing else?
I believe the old saying is, for Chicago, is a chicken in a car can't go. So I believe it refers to the fleeing of the city.
Got it. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Would that motion to adjourn?
Second.
Most made in second to adjourn. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone, this meeting is adjourned.